Call on Thursday, February 1st. Forest Lake Area Schools, School Board meeting in order like so. Let's meet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone. I'm Dr. Clark, can we take a roll call?
Yes, Member Reddellin?
Here.
Member Porcheron?
Here.
Member Hagland?
Here.
Member Pearson?
Here.
Member Refield?
Here.
Member Peterson is here. Member Tyson is at Pearson Hall.
Alright, thank you. Uh, we're watching through the meeting agenda.
So, second?
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll be able to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Can we approve? Scheduled and unscheduled, the summer reserving session. I'm number Porcheron, here.
We just had a couple, um, people come tonight. And, um, one of the, um, one of the ladies that was there talked about how we had to show us we did the movie, um, Sound of Freedom in high school. And she just wanted to tell St. U that that was a good night. And, and a member was just here just to speak about current events in the city.
Thank you. Student achievement, uh, student report National Honor Society.
Yeah, we've got, um, our director for NHS, St. Space, and a couple of kids to be here tonight. So, please hop in. Take your light.
Hi, I'm Dr. Massey and School Board. I'm St. Space. I'm the, one of the co-advisors for NHS. My other co-advisor, Rob Holgren, he has sick children, so he cannot come tonight. Um, and then, our other NHS officers are involved in the Nordic race tonight, gymnastics. So, next year, I'm gonna make sure that my advisors or my officers are not involved in sports. But I did bring Kylie Bloomstrom with me tonight. And so she's going to, um, kinda detail some of the things that we do with NHS. Um... Oh, I have to prepare.
Why don't you go ahead and take the time to put your mic down?
Yes. Okay, I'll just hold it. Um, so, National Honor Society is one of the clubs that we have at our school. Um, it's current 11th and 12th graders. The 11th graders have to have a 3.8 GPA to be admitted. And the seniors hold a 3.5. Um, and that's based on their 10th and 11th grade school year. And tomorrow, I'm actually sending out the, um, letters of applications to our current 10th and 11th graders. So, we're gonna start our application process soon. Um, NHS is built on our four pillars. We have scholarship, leadership, service, and character. And then, we currently have 52 members. I'm gonna let Kylie run through some of the events that we've done this year, as well as what we have upcoming.
Hi, Dr. Massey and School Board members. I'm Kylie. I'm one of four of the NHS officers this year. Our first main event of this year was trick or canning, where on Halloween, we sent groups of usually about five students out in Forest Lake and surrounding neighborhoods, and went door-to-door collecting non-perishable canned goods. And we ended up getting 900 pounds of food in donations that we delivered to family pathways in Forest Lake. Our next main event from this year was Walk to End Hunger, where we sold suckers for about two weeks, um, throughout the school and in the community. And we raised a little over $2,000. Um... Next event, we just recently had the Sound of Freedom movie showing, where we partnered with the Lions Club in Forest Lake and held it at the high school. The movie was to spread awareness of trafficking. And representatives from Washington County, um, came in for a Q&amp;A panel and informational session before the movie began. NHS, NHS members were there to help usher and sell concessions for the event. Some other smaller events that NHS is a part of, um, we have tutoring at the high school, which there's another slide later for. But we're able to offer one-on-one tutors tutoring sessions through the deans at the high school, and recently drop-in sessions on Thursday evenings. Um, we also have an event in December called Cards and Candy Cane's, where we all get together as an organization and make a bunch of holiday cards for senior living residents at Birchwood Senior Living in Forest Lake. And we drop those off along with some candy canes for the residents. Um, we often work with the Lions Club and help them with volunteer opportunities they need. At one of our nightly meetings this winter, we were able to get together and make blankets for North Woods Humane Society. Um, that was a really fun event. And we also do lots of help through the elementary schools. I think through my time at NHS, I've been to every elementary school in the district. Um, lots of fun ones we do during October for Halloween. We help with turkey bingos, kindergarten roundups, school carnivals, and much more this spring. Rangers Helping Rangers is where we donate all of our money we raise when we do concessions and from talent show. Um, Ranger Helping Rangers is giving back to students at Forest Lake who wanna take challenging courses like AP classes and CIS courses, as well as wanna participate in sports and need other classroom materials but don't have the funds to afford it. And with our donations we collect, we're able to help those students be involved. Like I mentioned earlier, NHS part of our pillars is scholarship. So, we really like to help our students at Forest Lake academically. So, we offer tutoring sessions every Tuesday, or every Thursday, sorry, from 2:30 to 3:30 when the activity bus runs. Um, and people can come in, they can ask for help reading over their papers. If they want help studying and forming good study habits, we can help them out. And if they have any questions they'd like to ask, we're there to answer them. And then, if students prefer a one-on-one option where they meet with an NHS member before or after school, or even during lunch, um, they're able to reach out to their dean and we're able to be connected with them for that. Upcoming events this spring is, we have Mental Health League with the elementary schools. The dates for that, or date for that is to be determined, but that will be later in the spring. Um, NHS helps organize and volunteers at the special needs dance. That will be April 20. We also run the Ranger Talent Show, which is a really good opportunity for the high school to be involved, come show their talents and all their artistic abilities. Um, and that will be April 12. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, I really appreciate the tutoring on Thursday nights. And we have an activity bus that really opens the opportunity for a lot of kids, so... Awesome.
Who else? I just wanna say thanks for coming out and speaking about the great work you guys do. And, um, it's just really nice to see how, um, our, our district values academics and those kids that are really going far. And I know that, you know, when you look at what your students are doing, it's not just NHS, but it's also sports and all these other activities. And, um, you know, for our part as a board, we wanna just wanna continue to try to give as many opportunities. 'Cause I know when we give these kids these opportunities, you guys really take it and ride it. It's really nice to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Thank you.
Alright, Special Education, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening, Dr. Massey and members of the board. We are here tonight to, um, talk about special education and oftentimes the highlight programs. And tonight, we decided, um, so myself, as well as Sarah Heckel and Chad Erskine, special ed coordinators, we a fabulous group of paraprofessionals. Um, in our district, about 225... Uh, we have about 125 paraprofessionals. Oh, that way. Got it, thanks. 125 paraprofessionals in the district. So, their job is to work directly with our students under the direct supervision of our licensed special education teachers. They help support the areas of academics, behavioral, um, community, as well as personal cares. There we go. Uh, in the last slide session, there has been a state statute that has been written that we are required to provide training for paraprofessionals. This was not a shocking thing for our district, how it was for ours, because we have had, have been doing professional development for a paraprofessional staff for several years. However, now, it's a minimum of eight hours, which we do within the first, before they're even back to school in August. There is a professional, um, development committee. And April Kelly, who is here, Jen Gajewski, who is here, and Amina Humphries. Oh, there's you over there. Um, were able to join us tonight. So, our paraprofessional group, our special education support, as well as our health office assistants. So, what I've asked them to do is to talk about the professional developments that they have had over the past couple of years to support their work.
Hello, my name is Jen Gajewski. I've worked for the district since 2004. And I am currently the president of playoff, and then I'm also on our professional development committee. And what we have done in the past couple of years is we've sent a survey to our members, and we use that survey, reflect on it, and then we put together our training for the next year. And we really look at what our needs are, of course, we look at the budget. And throughout the year, we offer a variety of trainings for our group. Because, as you can imagine, there's so many areas of special education that are important and imperative. And so, we try to touch on as many of those as we can.
April Kelly, um, I've been with the district since 2016, um, again, um, with the committee. Um, benefits of professional development, um, we see how we grow professionally. Uh, that has many, many different levels. I feel like we've learned new skills to help our students grow. Uh, those skills are endless, like every single day, every single hour, every single month, every single year, that changes. And we ask and share those new ideas together. Um, building relationships, not only for our students, but as a camaraderie as a group. Uh, I feel like that is strong for our leader. Um, and we create a common language to support students and professors in the district. Which means that every single time that we go through these, it makes a difference for our students.
Some of the previous professional development we had over the last couple of years has been a paraseries, presented by Linda Albridge, it's on Infinita. And what, what we did when we first did the Infinita training is we would watch the videos and then we would get together virtually. And we'd just talk about how, what we learned, how we could business with our students. We had a lot of great feedback from that. We also got a presentation by the Autism Society of Minnesota. We've had thesis training and, uh, training focused on behaviors from Bill Bumpfmer. We even had a presentation from Acer that was focused on behaviors. We've had Canvas help, um, presented to us on mental health challenges, really focusing on anxiety and depression in our students. Uh, common health concerns presented by our district nurses. And equity, what it means to all of us, presented by Brad Ward. So, as you can see, we use many of the people we have, because we have wonderful resources within our district. And then also bring in some multi-resources as well.
Our current professional development, um, which I think is phenomenal, um, something that we have done a lot of in the past. And it's a wonderful thing, and we got a lot of great feedback from, um, thanks to this group. Um, the back-to-school barbecue, um, we've done at the set building, um, which is where wonderful new employees that started beginning of the year to come and be introduced to, um, staff and get to have like a background guide. Um, Infinita has been wonderful. Um, you can find things specific to ASC communication, a bunch of different ones. Um, the back-to-school in-service, um, your special education one-on-one is learning and teaching of all the new items each time. Um, confidentiality and security in our schools, which are a lot of huge things that we were involved with when we first started beginning of the year. Um, catalyst training has been wonderful. We have been able to, um, see and learn about some of the same things that teachers were involved in next to them. Uh, and seeing those things are very important, because we're doing the same things and learning at the same time. Presentations, this last one was the Mercer presentation, which was wonderful. Um, and the book studies, which is weird. Um, we started book studies and resilience studies that is also connected. Uh, book studies, we get together and we connect on catalysts that we discussed. We reached out to our people and reached out. A lot of them are on trauma, uh, a lot of things that we see in the population.
Yes, and I just wanted to touch base on the book studies, because we thought wonderful feedback on the book studies. Many of them, as April said, has been focused on trauma. Um, we've read a couple of books by Dr. Bruce Perry, who is an expert in that field. And what I would tell you about that is that it not only has helped us with our students, but helped us with one another. You know, we all come from different backgrounds. And when you're part of a special education team, that team is really important. And it's really important that we make sure we're understanding one another and where we come from. And so, not only have those book studies, especially in the area of trauma, helped us work with our students, but it's helped us to work with one another. And the book studies, um, we read and they get a couple of months to read. But we also do a, throughout the year, do something specifically to resilience. And resilience is so important, as you can imagine, in our job. Because, you know, every, oftentimes with our, the population we work with, oftentimes there are a lot of levels of scale. And so, we need to be able to, to be able to just keep preaching and keep preaching, and to teach our kids to keep preaching and keep preaching. So, those have been wonderful. And on the survey, we got wonderful feedback on our book studies. And wonderful, wonderful feedback on our catalyst training. This was one of the first trainings we've done, in which it is also with a teacher we're given. So, what April and I were even talking about is that as we go into classrooms now, things in their rooms are making sense to us. And we support the teachers and our students in this general population. And so, that has been really wonderful, so that we're able to connect again as a team. Future professional development, we currently have a survey out right now in my group. And right now, these are some of the winners that people are telling us they're very interested in again. Catalyst, equity, trauma, and again, those book studies, and really how important they are. Yeah. So, once we get our, our survey done, we'll again reflect on it, see, you know, what people are wanting. We also do a combination of virtual and in-person. A lot of our members have young kids, and so the virtual is nice for them. But there's no benefits to, of course, all being in a room.
Um, reflecting on my time in this amazing professional group, PD committee, I've learned some vital things. The toughest relationships often teach us the most. And I realize that forming strong connections goes hand-in-hand with ongoing learning, and they fuel each other. And building rapport with students and understanding their unique needs boosts their confidence and their learning. My journey took a significant turn during my challenging second year in the district dealing with students that, whose sole purpose was just to be in class. And no contribution was to be able to get to class, and they were non-proflou. It was at that point that pushed me to seek more knowledge and support through joining various committees like this one, and diving into professional development. Our dedication to meaningful training reflects our commitment to nurturing our students and growth and comprehensively what they're understanding. Since our PD committee started using positive changes, we've had fewer paras leaving, we've had more collaboration across our departments, and stronger ties with educators and administrators. As a resilient community, we know our own growth directly impacts our students' success. We remain agile and embracing change as an opportunity for improvement. Thanks for your time.
Uh, I just wanted to go in a little different direction. I wanted to just talk for a moment about my son. I have, uh, that's him up there with me. He is 27, and he was diagnosed, uh, at three years old with autism. And when he was first diagnosed, my son had every challenge you can imagine. And like most kids with high functioning autism, he was a complicated kiddo. And he had, of course, the language and communication issues. But on top of that, he had mental health challenges and health issues, which are pretty common for kids on the spectrum. And the pairs were the ones who got him through all of his rough stages. When my son was in, uh, fourth grade, he talked about wanting to hurt himself and kill himself. It was the pairs who we provided that to, provided to the case manager who provided to us. Like most kiddos on the spectrum, he had a goal of asking for help, uh, for taking breaks. That was a goal of his for years. Those were the pairs that were encouraging that, that were mentioning, you know, were hinting to him, "Hey, Thomas, looks like you need a break." And I just can't even thank them enough. They were the ones, like I said, who got him through those tough stages. They were the constants. And he also had a lot of medical challenges, like most kids on the spectrum. He has severe allergies, he has chronic illnesses. Again, these were the pairs getting him through that. And they were the ones who would notice when he was having something wrong, when he was having an allergic reaction. Uh, one time, very severe allergic reaction that they noticed. And, um, he now is 27 years old and had Infinita and a catheter, asking for help, doing his own work, taking a break when he needs it. And of course, that took a village. But I really think of those pairs, and they're the ones who are still celebrating with him, even at 27 years old. And so, this child was really personal to me, it's personal to me for my son. But I have the, um, to just see what they brought to his life and realize that they're still celebrating with him 27, at 27 years old. And, uh, of course, I didn't want to know what I talked about him when I apologize. But we're really proud of him, and I'm proud of everybody who's touched his life. And of course, I may send a part of that with those pairs. Thank you. And I also just wanna say that I have really enjoyed working with Kelly and collaborating with her, and she's been wonderful to work with. And, um, I'm just so grateful for her, uh, for her trust in us and for just her confidence in us as we began this journey in the committee.
They can only do better.
Yeah.
Um, so, and also, Brittany Collins is going to be here tonight. She's in the, the top picture, um, the right. Um, she's been in the district, we think, 34 years.
34, I think they did it this year.
Yeah. Um, but she, you know, so she's not here tonight, but so she's a part of a pair at Forest View. Um, and that's with Forest View, too. So, one thing is they're all, all of our paraprofessionals are professionals, as well as many of them come with a story. Often, they are parents who want to base school schedule, or they have somebody in their family that has to stay. So, with that, we would just turn it over to ask if you have any questions.
I'd just like to say thank you for sharing your personal story. It's touching, and I know a lot of us at the state are probably not personal stories to share as well. So, I wanna echo your gratitude toward the paras. They have been instrumental in, uh, so many students' lives and supporting the staff. Your example was just one of, probably thousands of students. Basics and measures that look all to you.
I just wanna say also, thank you for sharing your personal story. I certainly don't have to apologize for being emotional. I work at Scampi Elementary part-time. I've worked there for nine years, and we have some really awesome pairs there. And I see what they do and how hard they work, and how they understand the kids and be a mom and a dad, and take the time to talk to them and give them breaks. They're, they might not be the teacher, you know, but they're making the teacher be able to be successful by helping, helping out. They just do great work. And I'm, and that's just, that's, I mean, I'm sure, obviously, ever I've seen pairs at high school, middle school... I'm gonna be talking later about one of, um, the boys on the swim team. And I know he has a pair who helps him, so... And that's, you know, after hours, evenings, I mean, so that's good.
Yeah, April's picture there is superheroes, and quite honestly, I think that's what a lot of my group is. They swoop in, and they save the day, and they disappear in the night. And often, nobody knows who they are, but they've been there, and they've made it through that.
Uh, I got a question for you. What, uh, you know, when you're looking at the, the training, do you feel like, you know, 'cause sometimes it, it seem like a lot, new, new program coming in and all that. Do you feel like it's not too much, or do you think it's just right?
I would say that at this point, I agree. I, I think we're sort of getting right about to the right amount now. You know, I think at first, you know, usual maybe there wasn't enough, and other times there was a lot. I think we're sort of right at the sweet spot now, to be honest. I think we have a couple of full days and a couple of half, half-days. And that's really, I think, where most of my group wants to be.
Great.
Yeah.
I'd still like to say that, Amina, um, as a health office assistant, the district nurses also take the health office assistants and give them some different training that they may need, specific to health. Um, and so, sometimes the health office assistants are with special ed paraprofessionals, and other times, they're off into a different session with normally-based trainings.
Alright, well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
I see you're all wearing your Ranger sweater, which is nice. I appreciate that, but I think it kind of shows that, you know, that we have a strong dedication to every student getting a great education. The work you guys do is so important and critical to, uh, making that a reality. And, and your personal story, for example, about how important that is for the individual, you know, to get a, a good start in life with a good education. And, uh, so I appreciate you coming out and the work you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I also want to thank, uh, I know Jen personally, of course. Um, so, I, it takes a team for ability, like you say, to raise a child. And you guys take such an important role in that, working with teachers and, you know, those extra help that they need to get through the day. But like you say, they start off, they don't have a lot of expectations, and how much they can grow, and people they become as an adult. I mean, I just can imagine the stories that come back when they're grown. I'm sure you hear that all the time, those success stories, and how much you give in them. And, I mean, every kid needs, like you say, needs help at one time, no matter who they are, for that extra person in their lives. And, you know, I was gonna ask a couple of questions. How, how do you guys, like, do you do it virtually, and is it, do you meet? Is it, is it on more time? I mean, how, how is it developed?
Yes, in after-school, they're usually on 415s. We can make sure the secondary and elementary care is, are, you know, care is, you know, kept for hours. So, we reach out to a whole group, ask who wants the book. And then, we meet at 415, you know, all the time, it's a year, one square foot. And then, just discuss the book and discuss how it's affected us. And it's been a pretty solid group of us who've done the book studies. And, uh, April and I are always, um, sometimes leading them, sometimes Kelly leads them. And we really do get the greatest feedback from them. I think we just really love them. And because we have four of each sort of group, people feel comfortable feeling, you know, being vulnerable at the book studies and, you know, talking about their own lives and, and their students' lives, so, yeah.
Perhaps the best piece, I think, is like, you know, and then just sitting and talking just about the book, we end up like opening up everything, and then, I feel, we learn more, this is about.
And it develops those relationships. And you see the trust between you all, how you work together so well as a team.
This is a positive that came out of COVID. So, COVID dollars, they should, COVID dollars allows for more professional development. And so, we are able to purchase the books for those who want them. They read them on their own time, and then they need for that hour, they can, they'll have.
And I'm just happy that this part of your movement, that we've got people to stay, and it's given them more, feeling more, maybe, um...
I think connected.
Now, with...
Yeah, confidence connected, yeah. Like last year, we lost about 50 people in our group. And at this point of this year, we had already lost, I think it was about 20. We're only at five this year. I think people are just feeling more connected, more comfortable. They feel like they have more tools than they do bots.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you for all your services.
Thank you.
Really important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Alright, uh, positive happenings?
I have a few things. Um, just a couple of events lately. Um, on January 19th, the Youth Wrestling Club, which is a feeder program for our varsity wrestling program, had a bingo fundraiser at the American Legion. And it was so well-attended. It was, it was really fun. It was wonderful to see varsity parents, youth parents, everybody kind of connecting. It was really exciting. And then, also, I've, uh, been up at the registration night at the high school, um, both on January 25th and on the 30th. And it just seems really well-organized and really well-run. Lots of staff there to answer questions, so that's been really good. And then, last night, um, I don't know what they officially call it, but the boys played volleyball at the high school, and then the girls coached them. So, it's like powder puff volleyball or whatever. And it was so fun. There were so many kids there, and the teams were dressed up in different colors. There were so many kids there, and the teams were dressed up in different costumes and stuff. It was really fun. The kids had a, had a great time. Um, and then tomorrow night, uh, tomorrow night is a big fundraiser for Scandia Elementary for the PTO. Um, it's called the Daala Gala, and it's, um, we've had almost a hundred tickets sold for parents coming, which is really exciting. No kids, just the parents, a great community building, opportunity, you know, auction items, those types of things. But a lot of the parents wanted to return, like you said, after COVID, now return into in-person events. So a hundred tickets sold, and we're selling tickets at the door, too, so that's super exciting. Tomorrow night, six to ten, at, um, the VFW, one of our parents is a veteran, and so the VFW is donating the space. And the Scandia Lions are donating the food, so really a community thing, so that's super exciting. Um, it's also, I love to read month at Scandia, I'm sure, as I love to read at all the elementary schools. Um, but Scandia is doing some really fun things. You can read at home and fill up these little things, and then bring them back, and you can get prizes, and they cut out all these little bad, like the little first-place gold medals, and they're really hyping that up. That's super exciting. And then February fourteenth is the One Hundred Days of School. And so Scandia, along with other elementary schools, I'm sure are celebrating that and having different fun things for students, different recognition. Um, so that's super exciting. Um, also, Scandia and Linwood on the same day, and I'm sorry I didn't write down the date, I think it was about two weeks ago, there was an active kindness program. The Scandia one was sponsored by the Scandia Elementary Enrichment Foundation. I'm not sure if the Linwood one was sponsored by the PTO or what, I'm not sure. But anyway, um, they had a special presenter come in, and the message was simple. Each of the kids are a superhero, and they have the power to be kind and to change someone's day. And they brought in music, and it was just really exciting. Um, the kids really loved it, um, and so that was super fun. And then also, um, what I mentioned about the swim team. So a parent, um, Ann True, um, Jack True, uh, is a tenth grader, and he was a student at Scandia, and I knew him and his family, and, um, Ann invited, uh, me, along with, I think, others, to the, um, the swim meet. I'd never been to a swim meet, so that was really exciting. And Jack, um, swims on the, um, varsity swim team, or the JV varsity swim team. And he's had a lot of health challenges ever since he was young. Um, and, uh, Mr. Mancini is the sixth grade teacher at Scandia Elementary, and he is also the swim and dive coach. And, uh, when Jack was in fifth and sixth grade, Mr. Mancini would always tease him, "Jack, you want to go for the swim team?" And he, Jack would say, "No, no, no, I'm not going to do it." And, uh, Mr. Mancini got to go for the swim team, and a pair, he was not able to swim last year because of some health challenges. But the year before, uh, he was on the team, and he had a pair that is with him at the practices and at the meets. And, uh, he swims just like all the other kids, goes right in the pool and swims in his event. And it's just really, um, exciting, and Ann, uh, the parents, Ann and Rod are just so appreciative of everything Forest Lake has done, and the pairs and the specialized department and everyone, uh, helping, um, with Jack. And it's also very exciting, Pair Eleven came and interviewed Mr. Coach Mancini and Jack about him being on the swim team and talked to Mr. Mancini. And I think it's going to be aired tomorrow night at ten PM, but it might be another night. They, they can't guarantee, um, when it's going to be, so that is super exciting. And then also, after the meet, I, um, met and spoke with Coach, um, Mancini and, um, Mr. Henen, our athletic director, for a little while, just talking about the pool and looking at some different stuff. And, um, Mr. Henen and, and Coach both said the pool staff do an amazing job keeping the facilities going, and they're very appreciative of all of their efforts. It's always clean and, and running smoothly. But, um, Mr. Henen and Mr. Mancini also talked about, you know, some hopes for the future and some different needs of improvement, improvement, um, for the pool area, particularly the diving. Um, well, our pool is not deep enough to dive, and we have several divers on the team, including, um, at least one diver that competes almost every year at a state meet. So we've just had some, um, discussion about that, but, um, and that was my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, um, the MSBA had their annual conference on January eleventh and twelfth, and it was just a really good way to start a year out. You're re-energized, recommitted, you're kind of fired up for the year. You have great speakers and, um, of course, just a great day. And then, um, it was a great conference, and we did some good workshops, too. So I hope that repeats, makes any more to add.
Yeah, I think you covered it, but it was, it's always a great event. I really enjoy it. And I always have a good keynote. I was on AI this year, which was interesting, giving the staff a book, which I gave last year. So, uh, well, yeah, it was a great conference and a lot of good information.
I can add a little bit to that, too. It's unfortunate that there was isolation this year because of, like, the election on her election as the district's representative. So I'll have some local representative in their, in their organization, which is great. I would just say, I, uh, to my first substance prevention, education in action coalition speak meeting, which, uh, was very interesting, they're really talking about, you know, positive community norms, kind of some overlaps with our, our RISE kids, and yeah, it was a very, very good meeting. Glad I was in there. Any else? All right. Um, we were a little bit short-staffed at the last meeting, and so I don't think there was anybody that looked around. Uh, C A F or S A, you have any questions?
Yeah, I was at the, um, City of Forest Lake meeting on January twenty-second. Um, uh, prior to that, the city administrator, Patrick Casey, uh, was, uh, replaced by an interim, um, city administrator, Christina Hand, so we talked about that a little bit. Um, talked about, um, there's a rotary plunge going on February seventeenth. They talked about, uh, that. Um, and one thing that was, um, exciting, I thought, is, uh, the new Forest Lake police officer that they just hired was a former Washington County Deputy Sheriff, and he was the mayor officer at Scandia. And he is a Forest Lake graduate, Zach Basil, if I'm saying that right. He's the new Forest Lake, he's the new police officer in Forest Lake, so that's pretty cool. That concludes my report.
Uh, and communication, I mean, sorry, uh, community education, Chris.
What did I know both, or sorry?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think anybody was on communication.
Yes, um, Community Education Advisory Council on January fifteenth. Um, we had a presentation, uh, from Bethany Hardy about the early childhood programs, about our preschool, um, and how our numbers are doing there. She says the preschool enrollment is pretty much back to pre-COVID levels. Um, and they have some new curriculum, um, that they're working with. Um, so that's, you know, very exciting. And, uh, we talked about how our preschool is four-star parent aware, it's the highest rating that you can have. And she also talked about how we give out some scholarships to needy families, which I thought was really great. She said we gave out, um, almost a hundred thousand dollars last year, if I wrote that down right. Uh, because we had some money from the state, and we were able to do that also through the parent aware. So that's, that's really wonderful. So that concludes my report.
All right, and I think, uh, we weren't able to have somebody at the curriculum discussion, is that right? Okay, uh, finance committee, you have a boardman?
Um, yeah, we had, we had an update for fiscal year twenty-four budget status. And we also talked at length about the earned state and sick time implementation that the state is mandated. Um, and Christine was missing, uh, just on that night. So we had Maria, Toronto, she did a great job stepping in. Uh, we had a lot of questions. We, I think we talked about that for like forty-five minutes. Um, it's going to be interesting, um, for the casual staff. They're going to start earning sick time, that they can use to take off for a doctor appointment, things like that, because we really did not get it. So, um, that was a really good discussion, and it's going to be good for them to go have that extra time to take time off. Um, and also, we talked about the budget, the budget development of this little year twenty-five.
Right, and the one thing I was saying is that, uh, sick time is a requirement that came out of last.
Yes.
It's illegal.
It's a legal requirement, and it's, yeah.
It came out of last session, that's right.
Yeah, and it's just for casual staff, for the people that work part-time. Yeah, it is.
Um, policy committee, Chris.
Yes. Uh, I was at, yes, I was at the policy committee, uh, meeting. And if you just turn the page and you look under new business, your first meeting there, that's what we discussed. The school board, member reimbursement guidelines, technology, acceptable use and safety, student transportation. And then we talked, oh, we talked quite a bit about the student records, um, policy, which is not under first meeting tonight, but we talked quite a bit about that as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And staff welfare, you have a boardman?
Okay, we talked about, um, the elementary literacy curriculum and the lead act, and how, um, we currently have our software, it's not part of the initial, um, what am I saying?
Or adopted.
Adopted curriculum, so we're going to be, of course, trying to get that covered. If that's, we have a good opportunity for that. Um, also, the enrollment budget development and the elementary pilot program.
Good, thank you. Super passionate about Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a few items, but before I jump into those, um, I just want to add to the voice and the accolades for our special education work with Director Wilson and Jen and Sarah in the middle row, and kind of unsung work that they do. It's amazing to watch the ground they cover, the kids they serve throughout the district. And if you see, uh, Jen Gajewski work with kids, it is magic. And April and Nita as well. So some incredible talent within the special education department, serving kids that have, um, very deep threat in the district, and helping them try and be successful. Um, on bubble playing field, it's critical work and extremely valuable and talented, so thank you as well. Um, we are now entering our staffing and budget season, um, as administrative team. So, uh, remember, boardman, mentioned from staff welfare, we did, and finance, we did a overview of that work. So we are now setting up the framework for developing the budget for the twenty twenty-five, maybe not, school year. Um, and as, as a declining enrollment district, that is, um, challenged by less resources due to fewer kids living in our district. So we need to adjust and right-size our budget to create a balanced budget. So we are busy doing that work, and along with that comes the work of staffing. The high school and the middle school have done their, their registration process, analyzing which kids are the most suitable courses that drives staffing at the secondary level. Uh, this past week and the week before, we had kindergarten events, with kindergarten perspective. Kindergarten families in the district, we're approaching twenty, uh, two, two-hundred registered kindergarteners already, and it's just beginning to head toward, so some very encouraging signs there of kindergarten enrollment. We're enrolling kids currently throughout the district, um, from other schools, local charter schools and elsewhere, kids making that transition mid-year. Uh, we are open for live year enrollments, and we're serving those kids. We're, we're great programming and great services in our classrooms, so some exciting work happening. By way of reminder, the Suburbities Music Festival concert is this Sunday evening. That's a shift for those of you that play part of this. It's to be on Monday. They shifted that to Sunday evening. The kids come in all day Sunday and work with the clinicians, and they're given pieces, well, it'd be little parts, um, by way of background. Each school selects their top performers in band, orchestra, choir, and those kids come together from the different schools, classes, kinds of programs, and they form the Suburbities All Conference Band, Choir, and Orchestra. Those kids get together early Sunday morning, they rehearse and practice all day with the directors, and in the evening, they'll put on the concert, having had the music in their hands for less than two or three years. It is remarkable, I think, so. At, uh, three thirty, excuse me, four forty-five, the guest reception. Board members who are welcome, I've sent the, um, online, um, registration for that. If you're planning to come, please, um, fill that out, and I hope you're able to make it. Concert then begins at six PM. We won't be disappointed. We'd love to have you. We are hosting, which then rotates to different schools. Now, ten years later, we're hosting, um, again. I'm excited to be here. And then all day on Monday, the, um, top band orchestra choir should each score, from two, for the periods in other schools, and two state clinicians, and one national clinician. Give feedback from those, those folks. Great. And lastly, February is Black History Month, and Thursday, February twenty-ninth, five thirty to seven PM, is the Black History Celebration Event in the High School Auditorium. So please mark your calendar for that as well. Next, you have your report.
All right, thank you. All right, seven, who can send agenda? Are there any items, people who can send agenda?
All seven, three, please.
All right, do we have a motion approved, seven, one, two, and four? Someone?
Second.
All of you, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All vote? The right one? Um, yeah, we, we have motion approved, seven, three first. By the big schedule motion approved, seven, three, so. All right, so I just had a question on the husband community, on the coordinator position. In a dramatic, just to give some background, I would really appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, we, um, on the consent agenda is to approve the, uh, director position. The previous director resigned, and was now working for the Center Youth and Family. Um, the person that is identified to be hired is Kelly Koppa. And she comes with extensive professional development, professional experience with the facility. And she led nationwide staff development and training, uh, for medical professionals and doctors nationwide. And it's a great thing, uh, with great credentials for this position.
All right, thank you so much. And I apologize for not noticing that earlier and reaching out.
That was a late addition, and.
Well, that was.
I apologize for not giving information to you, but all those details came together late this afternoon. Wanted that person to start right away, wanted to get it on the agenda, so very good.
Okay, wonderful. I, I looked at it, uh, right before I left, and I noticed it was there. How did I miss this before? That, that does make sense then, so thank you for that. Great, I knew the, I would have just gotten, if not, all in favor of bringing seven, three, say aye?
Aye.
All vote, seven, three is approved. Eight, action items, donations, number two.
Yeah, we have a, uh, donation from the Forest Lake Girls Basketball Booster Club for twenty-five hundred and twenty-one dollars for a coach bus for the DeBooth EHS for games. Uh, we have an anonymous donation, five hundred dollars for the Knowledge Bowl. We have a hundred and fifty dollar donation from Carly Peterson from Ross Orpadonics for community education athletics ice skating program. A hundred dollars from Sue Galbraith, I hope I said that right, from Sherco Construction, uh, for community education for the athletics ice skating program. We have a forty-five dollar donation from the Mighty Cause Charitable Foundation, Lion Lakes Elementary STEM School for general use. Twenty dollar donation from CAF American for Lion Lakes Elementary STEM School, general use. Uh, the total of that section is twenty-five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Oh, that's not right. Uh, I don't have it, but we have the next page, which is the Ranger Space Camp for community education. And we have a bunch of donations that I'm going to read here. I'm going to read the names for all the donors. Uh, we have a thousand dollars from the Jolson Family Foundation, five hundred dollars from Brandon Anderson, North Smith Construction, five hundred dollars from Alan and Jane Wernicki, four hundred dollars from John and Mary Kinsman, two hundred dollars from Martin Plackett, a hundred dollars from Curbside Waste, a hundred dollars from Geneva Pool, a hundred dollars from Elaine Swanson, a hundred dollars from Jennifer Parks, a hundred dollars from James Radke, a hundred dollars from Elaine Schroder, a hundred dollars from Luann Radke, a hundred dollars from Chloe Tina, a hundred dollars from Nicole Alvaroo, uh, fifty dollars from Mary Falk, fifty dollars from William Tran from Aspen Dental, fifty dollars from Joel Letko, fifty dollars from Elise Whitehall, fifty dollars from Jack and Sharon Elmquist, thirty dollars from Chelsea Keplinger, twenty-five dollars from Robin Johnson, twenty-five dollars for Barbara Leskey, twenty-five dollars from Micah Torgerson, uh, twenty-five dollars from Jenny Danaman, and twenty-five dollars from Michaela Schultz. And then also, sugar cookies donated from Big Apple Bay, it was a Forest Lake, a hundred and fifty sugar cookies. Uh, and that is, actually, is a total of thirty-nine hundred and five dollars, making a full total donation of seven thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars, and I solemnly accept that. I solemnly accept that.
Second. Discussion?
That was a lot of donations.
Great job. Perhaps we should have been with Peterson, review this.
Everyone. It's always nice to see the community have such generosity toward every district and athletes that they find, so, yeah, very appreciated donations.
All right, any further discussion? Not, call in favor of accepting donations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Policy 8.2, out of state travel by school board members, policy 103B.
The purpose of this policy is to control out of state travel by school board members as required by law. The policy committee has reviewed this committee. We had a first reading of the summer meeting, excuse me, January meeting and it comes through for approval at length with one modification in section three, redounding travel to regional or national meetings and striking that section and to the somewhat redundant. With that, administration recommends approval.
Right, we have a motion to approve 8.2, so.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, we have a motion to approve. 8.3, graduation required, this policy 613, Director Peterson.
Yeah, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Massey. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the terms of graduation as it pertains to different courses students need to take during their time with us in the secondary schools here in Forest Lake. This is the second grading of this policy, the first reading was at the January, first meeting in January. This policy has been through the policy committee. The real notable changes here from previous versions of this policy is the capture of the, all of the different credits students will take in seventh and eighth grade to align with the visual, theater, music, media and dance art credits options that we have at the, at the little school in eighth grade, as well as the noting of the, for students starting in ninth through 12th this next year, the requirement to take a personal finance credit, half credits, maybe rates 10, 11, or 12 in order to graduate. And it's also aligned with revisions in state statute from the most recent legislative session. Administration would recommend approving this policy.
Right, we have a motion to approve. So move. Second. I just had a question about when it can come back, I mean, when does it, would a student need to have this level of requirements?
This policy would go into effect for any of the students entering ninth grade beginning next year.
I think I might have an idea of where your long-term question occurs. There's breakdowns for graduate year because we're kind of, these are cycling into effect for the side of graduation. So that's a countermeasure of the policy. So we'll get to make the amendment again next year to kind of take care of those classes that have already graduated.
Dropping off whole language at the moment.
Yeah, probably for the next two years, if I'm remembering the policy two or three years.
Yes. Because there will eventually need to be a change in the grade level in which a student will take, if it's as a requirement that in the past has been part of our ninth grade experience and going forward that will need to be part of their junior and senior experience.
Any other question? Right, do we need a vote call in this?
Yeah, I'll get some results.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Who opposed 2024, 2025, school board meeting?
All right, so this is the typical time to do where we set the calendar for the year and those gates that are in front of you and the paddle, the first and third Thursday paddle. The tags again, we made changes according to, a couple of months ago for the meeting start times. There are three notable changes to that first Thursday, third Thursday paddle. The first one will be the October 24th change, so the mid-month reading is changed to the 24th through the M E A break. The second one will be March 13th, do a kind of a spring break, so that will move the first meeting of the month to the 13th. And then similar to this year with graduation, the first meeting of June would be held May 30th. So we'll move that minutes. There would be three meetings in May and June, 4th of July, we don't see it there, but 4th of July would be three meetings in June. So moving that first meeting of June to May 30th means we would have every meeting every month, which is, we're going to be the first one. And instead we can move it to every other week, as is consented. Administration would recommend that.
All right, so we have a motion to approve. Sorry. Discussion?
See if you can re-cally your calendar a little bit. If that worked.
I would just say that I very much appreciate doing the calendar work is not a thankless job and it's a lot of work. And so I really appreciate the people that look at these things and schedule them. It really makes it easier for us as board members to get our work done. Thank you. All right, any further comments, questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to approve. Five, approve positive community coordinators coordinator terms of conditional employment.
So we're now circling back to the person who was hired through the consent agenda, Cori Caldwell, who will operate under these terms. The terms are modified slightly and you'll see those changes identified on page two and approved insurance. Let me say that the funds to support this grant in this position are 100% allocated to our grant with Washington County, so there's no general fund cost to the school district. We're the fiscal agent, so we're all the terms and conditions approved by the school board for this position. And in negotiation or conversation with the person in this position, we'll see that we're allocating the single insurance of dental to salary versus insurance and something like that. That there's a net amount of need for that in this individual. So rather than losing that component of that money under these terms, we'll, the idea is to roll that inside. Administration would recommend that we approve these, this set of terms.
All right, we have a motion to approve. So move. Second. Discussion?
I guess I have a question. Is that, I mean, I'm not privy of that, is that something we do for other, you know, higher level positions if they don't need the insurance, it's common to have that to be salary? How does that work?
First of all, there's your terms, so each person, there are a number of people throughout the district that are not on a collective bargaining contract for set of terms. And I'm not sure, I'm looking at Director Freeman, see, this wouldn't be the first time this is taken place, but it's not all accurate. But Freeman will have much more accurate information about this.
It's not completely unique. There is one other employee that, that this is done for, that cannot exist in any collective bargaining agreement and I hope that's the majority of our employees. There is one that is, I don't know.
Second, we have a further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we got to take a vote call in that.
All right. Member Corcoran, should we take a vote call?
Member Tyson is not here, Member Rivlin?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Haylen?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Raffio?
Aye.
Member Christiansen, both aye.
Right, motion approved. New business, first reading of the school board member reimbursement guideline, policy 103B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are new, new readings, or first readings, so no action tonight. It's the practice of the school district to read where school board members, as you know, where expenses occur to travel, where sets travel is to represent the school district as board members. And the noted change in this policy is to reflect the stated change that was approved at the January. And with that change to this policy, administration will not approve it, so that's a precaution.
Nine, two, first reading of the technology acceptable use and safety policy 540.
The purpose of this policy is to set forth guidelines for access to school district computer systems and acceptable and safe use of the internet, recording electronic communications. The policy committee is privately planning this policy, updating the language. And there's some nice updates with respect to bullying and cyberbullying through district devices or district resources, surgery beds, and some really good work there. And how devices are used for, you know, searches and all that parents play and the supervision of that work when kids are not at school very often. So please get a look at those updates and we'll ask for your approval in this meeting in February and March.
Okay. And then nine, three, first reading of the student transportation safety policy 530.
So this policy is to provide safe transportation for all students and educate students and staff, community members and community members on safety issues and the responsibility of schoolhouse ownership. So there's a number of language updates in this policy, we're also capturing pre-casing to a writing our policies, identifying parent responsibilities as it relates to their education and in writing the laws. So really some primarily language updates throughout this policy. Please take a look at those and we'll ask for your approval at the margin.
All right. And then at 10, be sure you read the upcoming calendar dates. 11, regular meeting recesses to go in closed session to discuss contract negotiation strategy for the forward, following bargain units, Forest Lake Education Association, directors, principals and supervisors. Do we have a motion to recess to go in closed session? So. Second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.